Mr. Chair, for the morning, I think there'll be an additional deferral request for items five and six. So in the morning, you have three, five, and six.
Good morning, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue, I would like to introduce to you the members of our panel first. On my far left, Natalia Popovic. On my near-left, Stan Kamorik. On my far, near-right, Laura Alderson. And on my far-right, Rick Ross. And I'm Don Taylor, the panel chair. We also have with us today our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Barb, uh, Barzotek, on the left end of this desk. And in front of us, and at the right, we have our capable, helpful staff. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse nations, Inuit and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid, in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the opportunity of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the application or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before hearing the first item, I'm requesting a motion and a second or a decision to confirm the minutes of the last meeting, which was held on February twenty-second. So a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Kamorik, and a second.
And I'll second them.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Okay, the minutes have been confirmed. Are there any declarations of interest of panel or staff for items in this morning time slot?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to...
Uh, Mr. Chair, for item number eighteen, if it is called in the morning time slot.
No, that, I, ooh, I think that's afternoon.
Good afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, item four, I'd like to recuse myself as I'm acquainted with people within the immediate mailing area of that notice.
Thanks, Mr. Kamorik. Anyone else, staff? Okay. Declarations of interest have been made. Deferral requests. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I think you've outlined these to me in advance, but could you just confirm, have you received any requests for a deferral on this morning's agenda?
There is a deferral request, Mr. Chair, for item number three from planning, but not the applicant.
Oh, I think, so earlier you said six. That's not the case now?
Yes, five, sorry, I thought you were doing one by one. And then five and six, we, we received an email from the agent.
Okay, good. Thank you. Our Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed this morning?
None today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the opening remarks, so we can move to the agenda. And I suggest that we start with the, um, deferral requests. So... The first one is number three, forty Wimbledon Road. Let's see if I can get my list here. Is Mr. Sakoni here? Yes, thank you very much, sir. Yeah, if you could just explain why you request deferral today?
Well, we don't want a deferral, um...
Oh, yes.
Planning staff. It, it, timing kind of didn't work in our favor, so I was speaking with the community planning along the way, and, you know, we set out certain changes that he wanted to see, which we've implemented. But by the time we got, we submitted the drawings back for zoning, a rezoning review, and by the time he had already submitted his, his proposal, or his recommendation, after that, that's when we got the zoning review back. It was literally a couple days ago. So, we've made substantial changes to the, to the, to the application. All, all of his recommendations, when I spoke to him, were implemented in the new drawings. And now, with the new zoning review that came out, we've, uh, we've removed two, two variances and modified seven others. Substantially modified. So, i- in, in efforts to save time, like if we have to get deferred and come back, it's going to be a month and a half, two months approximately. We, we would like to hear this application today, just in effort to save time. The lot is just sitting empty. My clients are renting a place right now, and they really want to get going on, on constructing the home, on their home. So if we could hear the application with my new variances today, it would be greatly appreciated.
I'll, I'll just make a comment and then pass the opportunity along to the panel. I believe in this case, comments from the planning department are important, and that's why they asked for deferral, because they anticipate wanting to make some comments. I think you've, you've run into a timing issue here that you've identified. So I, I think that's, uh, the issue related to your request to proceed today, but panel, anything to add or questions to ask?
I just have, I just have a comment. I mean, i- if you have made these revisions, it would have been helpful to us if you had submitted those in the last forty-eight hours, in which case we would be able to see them today and entertain your application as a revised application.
Yeah, yes, we just got back the zoning review. So I mean, without that zoning, that rezoning review, we didn't know if we had to make additional. Again, and me speaking with the planner, he wanted the house shrunk.
But if you, but if you know what these changes are, and you knew what they were two days ago, then you could have submitted those on the, on the online application form.
Yeah, but there were, there were, there were certain things that the planner wanted us to hit, a certain, certain building.
But you say you've hit them.
Uh, yeah, but now we've confirmed it via the zoning review, right? Like, like, once we shrunk the house, he wanted the house shrunk, he wanted the house moved back, he wanted...
Okay, so are you, are you suggesting you're going to present us with those changes today?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Because you could have presented those last, like, twenty-four hours ago, and we would actually have it properly submitted, because now you've missed, you've missed a submission deadline, right?
Oh, I mean, I have the drawings here with me today. I didn't, I, I, again, it was just, like, by the time it came in and we reviewed it and we spoke to the client, it was, it's been literally like thirty-six hours, thirty-six, thirty-eight hours that we got it back, reviewed it, and, and here we are. It, it just, I thought we just missed, missed the window. To resubmit.
You kinda, you kinda did, but if you had, I guess what I'm saying is...
It was just timing.
You might have been able to make it. Anyway.
Maybe, yeah.
Any more questions, comments? Ms. Alderson?
Just a question. When is the next available time slot to hear this application?
Uh, probably late May. Uh, sorry, April, April.
Late April. So it's really not too far away. Late May would be. Late April sounds pretty decent, actually.
Mr. Chair, I have an additional question. Is there a notice issued since the notice, from what I understand, has been revised?
Uh... I could tell you, um, we have, I believe, close to twenty in favor neighbors to the old application. We have them all listed on file. How many were there? Fifteen? So there's fifteen that we submitted, and I believe five or six more that we've gotten very recently that we hadn't had a chance to submit. So we have a, a good portion of the neighborhood that seen the old, um, uh, requests for vari, the old variance request, and they're all in favor of those ones, and this will just, I guess, lighten, I guess, that list up.
They don't have a notice issue because what they're doing is they're improving
Yeah, correct.
what is, over what has been circulated.
Any other questions or comments? Is there anyone in the hearing room this morning that came to speak to this item? No? I don't have any registered speakers. Is there anybody online? Okay, then I think we can proceed to go into committee for a decision on whether or not to defer this application. Mr. Kamorik?
No, I'm good.
Oh, sorry, you're just getting ready.
Yeah, I'm just getting ready.
Anybody ca...
Yeah. Well, getting ready for some discussion so that we can do a motion.
I think we've already spent fair time
Okay.
discussing this, and I, I'm, you know, afraid that I'm going to have to make a motion for a deferral.
Okay.
If we proceed it, when do we see those changes?
Be prior to the next hearing.
No, no, if we proceed without deferring.
Oh, without deferring.
He would, he would have to verbally state all of his changes.
Mr. Ross, if you could use your microphone.
Sorry?
He would verbally have to state for each variance what the changes are.
I'm prepared to do that.
Sorry, they're in the motion right now? They're...
Sorry.
So we have a motion to defer the application by Laura Alderson.
Yeah, we're looking for a second.
Is there a second?
Is there a second for the motion? Okay, that motion fails. Is there another motion?
I'd be willing to proceed, but the applicant needs to understand that the risk that they're taking is that the alternative, I mean, should any of the changes actually be, um, worse rather than better, those are going to be rejected.
We're prepared.
So is there a motion to proceed with considering this item today? If so, we're going to need to stand it down for its turn.
I'll, I'll move to proceed.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Regrets, I should have spoken up with my colleague's motion to defer.
Okay. You agree with the motion to defer? Okay. As, as did I. So that motion to defer carries. Sorry.
Thank you.
So...
See you next time.
Wait. So we have a motion not to defer by Stan Kamorik, seconded by Rick Ross, so that's failed? So can we get the other motion back up that did fail? Do we have a second? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll see you hopefully not too long.
Yeah.
In a few weeks, hopefully. Okay, and Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, I, I assume, again, five and six, we can deal with this deferral matter together. And it's very recently been requested by the agent or applicant?
Yes, we received an email, so he can confirm.
Okay.
If not, then we'll just proceed with the regular agenda.
Okay, is Glenn Rubenoff here or online? Mr. Rubenoff?
Uh, yes, good morning. It's Glenn Rubenoff here.
Yes. Yes, sir. Could you just please explain why you would like this application, these applications for two A and B Placid Road deferred?
Yes, thank you very much. So, first of all, you'll note in the file that Forestry has requested a deferral as well, uh, as part of this submission. We also read the comments of planning. We have met with planning several times. We had provided them with some modifications, and then we were given a, a, an ultimatum, get us changes very quickly. We had, didn't have the time to properly address it. So we feel we need to properly come back, because there's several changes that we've made that are not reflected in the notice, and we would like to, uh, defer so we can come back with, with a proper, simpler application that addresses the concerns of Forestry, uh, and that clarifies what we're doing. So, rather than going through a whole lot of changes today and having a lot of confusion, we feel it's best to defer at this point.
Okay, thank you. Panel, questions, comments?
I don't have any comments, and if no one else does, I'm prepared to make one.
Why'd you know I need to avail the public first?
Okay. Sure.
Anyone in the room that came today to speak to, uh, two A or B Placid Road, applications five and six? No? And I don't have anybody registered right at it, so... Okay, now we can go into committee then. Comment, question?
So, basically, seeing that, uh, do you have a comment?
No, I was going to...
So seeing that, uh, community planning wants it refused, and urban forestry wants it deferred, I, I, I agree with the applicant. I think it should be, uh, deferred and move for deferral.
Okay. Second for that motion?
I will second that.
Thanks, Ms. Popovic. All in favor? Unanimously agreed to defer applications number five and six. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, we, we have a request to defer from a commenting agency, but I'm, I'm thinking that we'll just deal with that one in turn. Okay, so let, let's go back to the, back to the beginning and deal with application number one, which is fifty-six Six Point Road. Purpose of the application is to permit a vehicle dealership and to permit a parking deficiency. There was a previous decision on this property, July eighteenth, twenty eighteen, to approve a five-vehicle showroom and four additional parking spaces. We have four transportation conditions, one of which I believe would require the elimination of variance two. And we have five planning conditions, including a recommendation that the extension requested be limited to three years to enable the applicant to apply for a zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, I, I believe a, a presentation on this one would be desirable, and I would call on Bach Din.
Good morning. My name is Bach Din. I am the agent for the owner at fifty-six Six Point Road.
Okay. Could you provide us with a, a presentation, and, and certainly we would ask you to focus on the four transportation conditions and the five planning conditions?
So, uh, this application had been previously approved for the same variant and same condition. Uh, the, the condition of the planning staff to request remove the variant number two, we agree with that. We can remove that and revise the, the site plan and resubmit to zoning. The very, uh, the condition of, uh, city planning, I think, city planning for the five years. I spoke with the owner, they, they wished to have, uh, for three years, but they, the, I spoke with the owner, they wish for, to have it for five years. They planning to retire after five years, and I don't think they will go through the zoning amendment, application, rezoning. So that's, that's the only request that they have, and, and everything else, they agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kamorik?
Sir, the, wha- what is the main use of, of that facility? I mean, is it a repair, is it a repair shop, or is it strictly a dealership? Because the, the signage indicates that it's auto repair, which is a permitted use.
Yeah, so, uh, so the main use is repair shop. They apply for to sell the, to be able to, uh, dread the car. So the way they do it is they just, uh, buy and sell the car, not more than five cars a month.
So they're, so they're doing repairs and then selling the cars, and really the selling of the cars is an ancillary use to the repair shop?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. To me, that, that's, that's a big difference than just getting an approval for a car dealership in and of itself. And for that reason, I would be prepared to, um, to move approval, so unless someone else has any questions or...
I, I think, again, first of all, I...
He's asking for five years, based on the...
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
Based on the prospect of the retirement of the owners.
Yeah, I didn't say what terms I'm going to move the motion on yet.
Okay.
I just want to see if anyone else has any comments.
No.
No other comment?
That was my only comment.
Okay, is there anyone in the room here to speak to application number one, fifty-six Six Point Road? And no one online? There, there's none. Okay, so let's go into committee and entertain a motion.
Yeah, I, I'd like to propose approval, um, subject to the transportation conditions, which I believe then eliminate one of the variances, and subject to planning conditions, um, however, with the modification of planning condition one to be five years rather than three years.
Is there a second for Mr. Kamorik's motion?
I'm happy to second that motion.
Ms. Alderson, thank you very much. All in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Din. Application number two, eight-six-six The Queen's Way.
Good morning.
Yeah, just sort of a brief overview here. The purpose of this application is to permit a parking deficiency to accommodate a new childcare center. There is one variance. Transportation services is okay. The application has councillor support and support from the More Neighbors Toronto Organization. And there's a Toronto Parking Authority cautionary email. I presume you are Nicholas Dell?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, you were here a month ago.
I sure was, for a similar TPA question.
Yeah, if you could, this is a pretty straightforward, easy-to-understand application. If you could, in your presentation, focus on this Toronto Parking Authority issue and the cautionary email, what your interpretation is. Have you talked to them? Do you understand it? Are you okay with it? That kind of thing. Because it's really the only issue we have before us.
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair, Nicholas Dell, for the record, thirteen seventy here, Ontario. I'm representing a Francophone daycare in this instance. Part of the record is sufficient onsite parking, or on-street parking in the vicinity, and in the combination of the TPA's cautionary notice, the transportation services have noted that this particular site can benefit from the location and proximity of offsite parking, and they don't see any issue with the replacement of those three spaces in the rear for, for a daycares playground. I would also like to note, to color this application with some passion, is that it is a Francophone daycare, and there's not many Francophone-interested daycares in the city, and that's an important part of our identity in Toronto. I don't believe that the cautionary nature of the TPA's letter presents any adverse impact. Approving this application would, would merit for the community. I think it's desirable. I, I think it's something generally that we should be supporting, and for the matter of reduction of parking, it's a calculation done as, as a blanket administrative, um, approach across the city for commercial uses that require two-point-five parking spaces for every one-hundred-and-thirteen meters of gross floor area. With the removal of three parking spaces, we would be reducing that to ninety-three square meters instead of one-hundred... instead of one-hundred-and-thirteen square metres for every two-point-five parking spaces required for commercial uses. Commercial uses that aren't the heavier uses like hotels, restaurants, theatres. Um, it is a blanket assumption across all commercial uses. Uh, through the chair, we did reach out to, uh, transportation to provide any additional evidence they may require. They didn't need anything else from us to justify the nuanced, um, operations going on in this, in this, in this building. There are other tenants in there that have different hours of operations that may not compete with the daycare, a different number of employees, and, and different nature of their uses that the blanket assumption across parking spaces may not necessarily merit. Um, and we didn't need to go there. And so I'm happy to report and answer any questions you may have, Mr. Chair, about the cautionary letter from TPA. I, I read it more in a positive light, especially with the interpretation from transportation. And I think otherwise, I'd be happy to conclude my presentation here.
Okay, uh, we'll open it up for questions from the panel. I'll kick off with the first one, and again, it's this cautionary notice. Um, they, they do mention there could be cost implications on the applicant if there are any adverse impacts on their parking spaces on street. Um, are, are you sufficiently, uh, you know, knowledgeable about the implications and okay with it?
Yeah, through Mr. Chair, I am.
It's not, it wouldn't be a condition of approval if the committee goes that way. But it is something that's tabled and, you know?
True. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. The committee only has what's been presented in the application. If it was not requested, any additional parking justification from the transportation services. I did reach out and offer to provide the different, um, practical applications that the existing users have. We have to plan for the use, not the user, but I do think it's important to, um, provide additional parking rationale should it have been requested by transportation services. I don't believe it's going to be, make any adverse impact to on-street parking. I think it's important that it's available.
Okay.
But I don't believe it's going to merit any sort of bagging checking by TPA.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Alderson?
Um, yeah, just one quick question. How much parking, if any, do you have behind the building?
Thank you for the question. Uh, we've got six spaces. Um, there are more, I say this sort of in, in practice. There are more spaces than that in practice, um, that, that are painted back there. But, um, there are only six, uh, that are not interfering with the rear exit door. But there is one in front of that door, um, which would push it up higher. And that was a comment that my client made to me initially. Uh, she disagreed with the zoning examiner's notice, saying, no, I count more out there. Uh, but I explained that, uh, from planning and a desktop exercise, we can't really put parking space in front of doors. But that hasn't stopped people from parking there.
So presumably, staff would be able to park back there.
Correct. Adjacent to the proposed daycare, uh, playground.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, is anyone in the room here to speak to eight-sixty-six The Queen's Way? Anyone online? No, okay. Um, were there any other questions? Were there any? No? No more questions? Alrighty. Let's go into committee then for a, a motion or a discussion if necessary.
I, I just want to summarize the application. So essentially, you're removing three spots in the back to create a playground. You're keeping three, which will become staff parking only. Um, the, really, the parking demand for daycare is drop-off and pickup. And, and so long as that's concentrated in one area out front, I have no issues with this. So on that basis, I'd like to move approval.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Kamork. Is there a seconder for Mr. Kamork's motion?
I'm happy to second.
Ms. Alderson. All in favor? That is unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, staff.
Okay, we can now move to item number four. And I'll see you guys in a little, for, um, see you back for item seven. What's that? Oh, yeah, yeah. See you later. Okay, item number four, seventy-nine Vale Crest Drive. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are ten variances requested. We have transportation services is okay with this application, as are ravine and natural features protection and the TRCA. And we have two support letters, um, on file. I believe this is pretty straightforward and easy to understand, and I don't think we need a full presentation. Uh, Lauren Rose, are you available to speak to the matter?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm here.
Okay. Um, would you be okay with either just proceeding to entertaining some questions from the panel? Or do you have any comments that you wish to make?
Uh, just that, uh, planning vetted this early on. We, uh, proceeded to make all the changes that planning asked for, and as a result, there's no report from planning, which I suppose is supplied, implied support. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions if you...
Okay, then let's do that. Panel, any questions or comments? For Mr. Rose? None? Anyone in the hearing room here to speak to seventy-nine Vale Crest Drive? No one online? Okay, then let's go into committee for, uh, discussion if necessary or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll bring a motion.
Ms. Popovic, thank you. You're gonna make a motion?
To approve, yes, please.
Oh, you have made the motion. Oh, so fast, I didn't even recognize it as a motion.
With a reason.
Any conditions, please? Any conditions?
Yes. Um, with, um, uh, with the conditions of...
I don't see any conditions.
Pardon?
There are no recommended conditions.
Yeah, ravine is, is, that, that's for information that they need to apply under the, under their regulatory regime, so that's not a condition.
But urban forestry wants a tree protection plan.
Hmm.
No?
Not documented, no.
Sorry. Okay. No conditions.
So it would be without condition. Are you seconding on that, please?
I'll second it with no conditions.
All in favor? That is approved unanimously. With Mr. Kamork having declared a, an interest. Okay, items five and six have been deferred. Item seven is thirty-nine Appledale Road. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are three variances. Uh, urban forestry has requested condition three, which is cash, uh, cash in lieu of, uh, planting a tree. Uh, there are no other comments, no neighbours' comments. So I just have to get my list of, uh, agents here. Greg Ewens, are you, um, available? Oh, you did not pre-register. Are you available, Mr. Ewens?
Uh, yes, sir, I'm, I'm here.
Okay, just for future reference, it's important for you to pre-register to participate in the hearing?
Oh, apologies. I, uh, I received the email from staff, um, with the, with the registration link, so my, my apologies for that.
Okay. So, um, I believe, again, this is a very straightforward application. Um, we only have the one condition from urban forestry, condition number three. Would you be prepared to, uh, not make a full presentation on this? I don't believe we need it. But you could either make a comment or agree to, uh, going forward with any questions that the panel may have of you? Would that be okay?
Sir, I'll just, that's certainly fine, sir. I'll just say that the, um, variances requested, uh, are consistent with the existing context in the area and reflect several recent approvals by the committee. Uh, the owners contacted the adjacent neighbours, who haven't raised any concerns. We've talked with city planning staff, who have no objections, were aware of, and have no objection to the urban forestry condition, and thank you.
Thank you. Panel, questions or comments for the applicant? Is there anyone in the hearing room that's here to speak to thirty-nine Appledale Road? No? No one online? Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready for a motion.
Ms. Alderson?
This is a very straightforward application, uh, meets the four tests, and I move for approval subject to urban forestry condition number three.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a seconder for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Ross, thank you. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ewens. Moving to application number eight, twenty-one Seventeenth Street. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage, including a secondary suite in the basement and a deck in the rear yard. There are six variances. Urban forestry has requested denial. Planning has requested that variance two be reduced to eight metres from eight-point-four-seven. And there is a Metro Links advisory. Faraz Puande is the registered agent. Are you with us?
Good morning. Uh, yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. Uh, before I start my presentation, I have to say that, uh, on the last minute, two days ago, I received that I have to provide you with a waiver for the variances because I reduced two items on the heading notice, and I removed two items, number four and five. Uh, we don't need them anymore, so, uh, but, uh, I showed everything on the present, presentation, on the presentation file, uh, so, um, this is my concern. And, um, I have a... Okay, I, I had a conversation, uh, with the, uh, city planning and stuff. They, they asked, uh, us to reduce the height to eight metres. I did for the variance number, um, variance number, uh, sorry, let me start from the, um... Yes, let me start from...
Mr. Chair, the applicant is proposing to make revisions that we don't have before you. Does the committee want to continue, or do you want to defer this application? Because they didn't provide what was required of them, so you don't have the plans or the updated variances in front of you.
Madam Secretary Treasurer, were the variances not provided in the added materials?
He hasn't outlined the revisions to us, so it's not very clear. And the plans attached aren't fulsome.
I see.
They're supposed to give us a waiver if they're making revisions. They have not done that.
Okay, are you...
Uh, sorry, can I, uh, you know, at, at the last minute, I had a call from CT. I mean, I called the CT Committee of Adjustment. They told me, it, it was all, uh, it was almost at noon, that you have to provide us with the, uh, waiver. You know, I was unable to provide that day, two days ago, and send it to you. I, at that day, uh, I provided, from before this, uh, uh, presentation, I showed the reduced, uh, i- variances. And, uh, if I, if I, if you knew that, that I, I could provide it sooner.
Yeah, we have to deal with what's before us, and what your applicant wants is not before us. So personally, I don't think we have a, an option here. I think you need to, uh, produce, produce a new notice and get scheduled for another hearing, and that we, uh, should seriously consider deferring this application. That, that's my, my view. Is there a motion to deal with this?
Mr. Chair, I...
Ms. Popovic?
Yeah, I agree with those comments. We don't have the proper materials before us, as I understand Madam DST. Uh, and on that basis, I believe you need to defer interference.
Is there a seconder for Ms. Popovic's motion?
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. Sir, uh, yes, your, your application has been deferred to, uh, a later date to enable you to correctly and accurately identify the variances.
Sorry, was there anyone present in the room for twenty-one Seventeenth Street?
Okay.
And no one online, Adam? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. Application number nine, fourteen Graywood Drive. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are four variances. Uh, we have a request from urban forestry for condition one regarding a city-owned tree. We have a planning condition, and we have three transportation conditions. Mr. Milne Pierce, uh, pretty straightforward, but if he could, you're, you're standing there, so if you could make a brief presentation?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Addison Milne Price. I'm planner at Design Plan Services located at nine-hundred The East Mall, Suite three-hundred, here on behalf of the owner. Uh, I'll briefly go through, uh, this application. Firstly, I'll just note that we have no issues with any of the conditions requested by transportation, planning, or urban forestry. Uh, with respect to, uh, the variances, uh, variance one is variance per FSI. And, uh, the proposed FSI results in a dwelling that's quite similar to the dwellings that have already been constructed along Graywood Ave. Uh, there are many examples, but particularly sixteen Graywood Drive, uh, the adjacent building, uh, to the, um, through the west, I believe, has recently been approved for an FSI of zero-point-five-seven, which is quite similar to the, uh, proposed FSI. Uh, there are several others, uh, along Graywood Drive, that have a, a similar FSI as well. Uh, with respect to variance two for front yard setback, uh, this front yard setback only pertains to a small portion of that front main wall, uh, to a bump-out. Uh, the rest of the main wall of the building will be compliant with the front yard setback. And I'll also point out that sixteen Graywood Drive has a very similar bump-out with a similar, uh, front yard setback. Uh, with respect to the aggregate side yards, uh, I'll point out that, uh, the dwelling is compliant with the required se- side yard setback on both sides, and again, is, is quite similar to the aggregate side yard setbacks in the neighbourhood. Uh, lastly, variance four is directly related to the front yard setback. Uh, the roof eaves project a compliant amount into the, the front yard setback for the majority of the dwelling. It is only for that front bump-out portion where a variance is required. Uh, and therefore, it's my view that this dwelling will fit in with the surrounding area, particularly along Graywood Drive.
Okay. You mentioned that you were okay with the conditions requested by urban forestry and transportation, but I don't think you included plant, the community planning condition?
Oh, yes.
You're okay with that, too?
I am.
Okay, if that's it, uh, panel, questions, comments? None? No questions, no comments? Okay, is there anyone in the room that's here to speak to item nine, fourteen Graywood Drive? No one online? Okay, then let's move into committee for, uh, discussion if required or a decision. I'm prepared.
I'd be prepared to, uh, make a motion, uh, subject to, um, being attached to the planning condition and forestry.
And transportation.
I'm sorry, and transportation, sorry.
Is there a seconder for Mr. Ross's motion?
He didn't actually state the motion and the reasons. You said you're prepared to make a motion, subject to conditions, but you didn't say...
I'm, I'm making a motion to approve, subject to forestry, planning, planning condition, and transportation.
And you're re- we need reasons for the motions as well.
I believe it clearly meets the four tests.
Thank you.
The application.
And that's been seconded by Ms. Alderson?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? The approved unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Milne Pierce. Moving on to item ten, ninety-five Third Street. The agent is Mark Lilly. The purpose of the application is to construct a partial second-story addition above the existing dwelling. There is one variance requested. And the only material we have on file related to this is a Metro Links advisory. Very straightforward. Unless you have any comments that you wish to make, uh, to us, we could leave it to, uh, us asking you any questions, if we have any?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is that fine? Okay. Panel, questions, comments? Panel, questions, comments?
One question, if I may, Mr. Chair. There was a previous decision in two thousand and fifteen, which was also for a second-floor addition. Was that not done, and is this what you're coming back for now?
Yeah, that was a, the ground floor addition at the back. So if you look on the site, you'll see there's kind of an addition structure there, and so that was completed, and now we're topping that off with a second floor.
So you're topping up the same addition up? Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Sir, any, getting very few people in the hearing room. Are either of you here to speak to this application? No? No one online? Okay, then let's move to, into committee for discussion if desired or a motion.
I'm prepared to bring a motion forward. I believe this application meets the four tests under the Planning Act and move for approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. Is there a second or for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I will second.
Thanks, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? Approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
Moving on to you read my mind. Yeah, we'll, we'll complete this one and then maybe take, no, why don't, yeah, why don't we complete this? It's very straightforward. Okay? Item eleven, one forty-nine Ellen's Avenue. The agent is Bill Hall. The purpose of the application is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling, a new covered front porch, and a new covered rear patio. There is one variance for a very minor floor space index increase of about six square meters. Mr. Hall, are you online?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair.
Okay, this is very straightforward. I don't believe we need a full presentation from you. Would you be okay to making any comments you may wish us to consider, or just move into questions from the panel?
I don't feel that I agree that this is fairly minor application, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, we'll do that then. Thank you. Panel, any questions, comments? Anyone in the room here to speak to one forty-nine Ellen's Avenue? No? Nobody online? Let's go into committee for a decision.
Unless there are any questions or comments, Mr. Chair, I would like to bring a motion to approve on the basis that it is a minor variance and it meets the other test under the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. Is there a second or for?
I will second that motion.
Mr. Ross, thank you. All in favor? That is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Hall. And now, upon my colleague's request, can we take a very short, well, what do you have in mind?
Ten minutes from ten forty, so ten forty.
Ten forty? So we'll recess until ten forty? And thank you very much. What's that? Oh, good, thank you.
Siri would have turned that off, wouldn't she?
Anyway, I got it plugged in, so it wasn't going to destroy anything except the light bulb. Thank you for pointing that out.
Twenty-one eighty-one, so.
Well, put it, you know, what?
Oh, good. Tell me, maybe, maybe, Adam, maybe you'll know. If, if the, if the applicant is requesting a deferral, and they've already sent in all this stuff, and they're just requesting a deferral. If it's, if it's them that's initiating it, do they have to pay again? No? Okay, I think it's ten forty, guys, ten forty-one. I'm probably due. So I had open four, three hundred five, and number one. And I, I have I don't know where that went from, it simply was one condition.
What screen is that, you're arguing? Oh, that's just different.
It said they refused. Sounds confusing.
Yeah. But in, in a follow-up.
I, I actually don't, I don't remember whether it was true or consolatory.
We are on twelve. We are on twelve.
Ron, okay. Okay, thank you for allowing us a bit of a break. Uh, we're moving on to item twelve, one, two, three, Edgecroft Road. The purpose of this application is to legalize and to maintain a new detached dwelling with an attached garage that is currently under construction. There are three variances. Um. There was a previous decision made on this property on January the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three that allowed a zero point five-two FSI and a seventeen point eight-one meter dwelling length. Um. Wrong one? Hmm?
The camera's on.
My camera's on. Is it on now? What's going on? Is it on now? Okay. So I'm reading the right application.
No, no, yeah, but you still have.
I'm not on yet.
Start with you.
Ah. Okay, for anybody watching in, you'll have to trust me that it was, it was me that has been speaking. Robert Bader. The agent, are you available, sir?
Representing the property owner, uh, B A D E R is my last name. And, uh, I don't have much of a presentation to, uh, to, uh, prepare to you. I think it's, uh, kind of.
Okay, so would you be okay with just asking you any questions we may have then?
Uh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the first one. In my read, you got approval for variances one and three in January twenty twenty-three. Um, why do you need to request approval for those previously approved variances?
Hmm, it, through the construction of this new dwelling, it was discovered that the surveyor had made an error in placing the stakes and the house was placed, um, uh, just under a meter, uh, into the front yard, into the required front yard setback. And that's the reason why we're back here, because it was identified through a, uh, an as-built survey.
Okay, that's with respect to variances two. We understand that. I'm asking about variances one and three and your need for them, because by my read, you got approval for both of them.
Mister Chair.
Just over a year ago.
Yes, and that's, that's the precise read that I'm taking as well, but it was committee of adjustment staff that made a determination that because there were conditions imposed in that previous variance, uh, decision, we would have to do it all over again.
So the previous decision was to approve subject to conditions. One of the conditions was to tie it to the plans for certain aspects. So once you don't comply with those plans, you need the variances over again because you can't comply with that decision.
Yeah, so it's treated as new even though it's, it's not.
Any other comments or questions? Ma'am, ma'am in the hearing room. Are you here to speak to this application? Can you tell me which one you are here to speak to and then I can stop asking that question? Not till this afternoon.
Item fourteen.
Oh, fourteen, sorry. Oh, coming up, all righty. Uh, Adam, anyone online to speak to this application? No? Okay, then let's proceed into committee for a decision. There are no agency comments, no conditions.
Yeah, I, um, Mister Chair, I, I find these, um, variances to be, uh, to be minor. Um, as noted before, two of them have already previously been approved. Um, I find it meets the four tests and, um, would be happy to, uh, move approval, uh, with no conditions.
Thank you, Mister Kamark. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? That is approved unanimously. Thank you very much, Mister Bader. Moving on to item thirteen. Thirty-two Kings Lynn Road. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. The existing detached garage in the rear yard will be removed. There are five variances. Uh, we have urban forestry requesting refusal. We have a planning condition. Um. Franco Romano is the registered agent. Mister Romano, are you with us?
Good morning, Mister Chairman. Franco Romano, three twenty-one Lake Shore.
Thank you, Mister Romano. Uh, yes, can you, you know, maybe it's pretty straightforward, but, uh, make a fairly brief presentation and at least focus on the planning condition and I guess just as importantly, the urban forestry request to refuse.
Uh, yes, yes, I will. Uh, if staff can bring up my presentation slides, please, that'd be very helpful. Um. So the, uh, the planning staff condition is an appropriate condition because the one side yard setback that's being proposed on the north side is the, basically at the existing condition and the reason for that is to facilitate, uh, practical usable space within the building, but also to ensure that the side yard setbacks on both sides beyond or beyond that, that, uh, existing condition are, uh, zoning bylaw compliant and larger than zoning bylaw compliant. The urban forestry, uh, recommendation, I think, is, is inappropriate and just, and just wrong. Uh, and it is because the, both trees are within as of right permission, uh, areas of influence. If we look at the, some, on this slide, we'll look at the upper left-hand photograph. There is a retaining wall. It's a, it's a older wood structure retaining wall that surrounds that front yard tree. And that driveway that accesses the subject site is mostly on the subject site, but also partially on number thirty. So it's not fully on the subject site. In order to have a driveway that accesses the proposed dwelling with a zoning bylaw compliant side yard setback and larger, just larger by, uh, four or eight centimeters, the driveway needs to, uh, access the integral garage. Uh, there's not enough runway in between that retaining wall, which I would submit is not going to be able to be kept while construction of any dwelling on the subject site going to occur. It's less than three meters between the front wall of the proposed dwelling and where that retaining wall starts. So, uh, we are, we will be proceeding with a request and a permit for, from urban forestry to remove that tree. And if urban forestry objects, then I, I guess the next steps would be to either appeal it to community council where the dwelling would have to be pushed back, pushed back further into the lot. And pushing it back further into the lot would result in concerns for the neighbor at number thirty, which my client has discussed the application with, and number thirty already has a concern with the the building it itself that's being proposed, which has essentially no variances associated with, with that side. Uh, in terms of those photographs, a couple of the photographs there, number thirty-one and forty-six Kings Lynn have floor space indices in excess of, of what is being proposed, up to zero point six-five, so the proposed floor space index is not unusual. If we go to slide number two, you're going to see that the site plan, the building itself that's being proposed is largely fourteen point seven eight meters in length from the front wall to the rear wall. The building length that's being proposed is fully within the building depth permissions of nineteen meters, so the rear yard tree is also being affected by the as-of-right construction or, or permission. The building length that's being proposed is eighteen point one six meters, basically for the, uh, underground, uh, storage that's being proposed for the, uh, and I'm showing that in the middle blue line. Otherwise, the building at two stories is fourteen point seven eight meters. The sixteen point one eight meters that we'll see in the lower blue line is for a one-story bump out. And that one-story bump out has a south side yard setback of over two meters. See that both side yard setbacks are, uh, by law compliant, but for that zero point four six at the north side, which is why staff is looking for the, uh, the condition. The roof eaves is in that same position. That's basically where the roof eaves is today. And if we look at the building itself, both in the front elevation that's shown on the lower right and in the left, the side elevations, the building height is lower than what's permitted and the wall heights are lower than what has been permitted. The fenestration, the windows and the doors for the proposal are largely towards the front and the rear. Uh, the side windows that are along the south side are to closets and the door that is, uh, proposed there is, has a recess to it. So the door is to a mudroom and the window next to the door is to the, to the mudroom. So that's about a two-meter side yard setback. I would submit that urban forestry's, uh, tree permit request or condition would be the appropriate condition to impose. Planning staff's condition is also appropriate to tie that zero point four six meter north side yard setback to what exists and that the proposal is minor in nature and, and, uh, ask that the committee kindly approve it. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Romano. Panel, any questions or comments?
I have one question, Mister Chair. Uh, Mister Romano, with regard, with regards to that north, uh, site, north side setback, is that an existing wall they're trying to retain? Is that the reason? Uh, i- i- it is what it is?
Yeah, the intention is to, is to keep it as it is, um, and, uh, in that location, yes, and that would minimize.
They're trying, they're trying to maintain a section of that wall without taking it down.
Correct, yeah. There will be, you know, there's, there's a, there's obviously a, um, a, a new roof that's gonna be on top of.
No, no, I, I understand, but, but there's no, there's no digging going to occur, um, for that foundation work because it's gonna remain as it is.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I know there's no one in the hearing room to, uh, speak to this application, but we do have, uh, the neighbors from number thirty Kings Lynn Road, uh, John Majorius and Sarah Pace.
Sorry, through you, Mister Chair. I'm just gonna unmute Sarah first to determine whether it'll be Sarah or John speaking.
Okay.
Sarah, can you hear me? Hi.
Yes, I can, thank you. I believe John has his sound sorted, so he'll be speaking.
John will be speaking?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna mute you and I'm, I'm gonna unmute John. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Now, thank you, Chairman and the committee. Um, I'd just like to take, uh, the opportunity to, I guess, bring up some points. I believe you've already read, uh, what we submitted. So to begin, uh, one of the biggest concerns that we had is with regards to grading, uh, and that's really important for us. Um, the grading plan admitted, uh, at the, at the, uh, permit stage. Uh, and so that we're sure that the stormwater, uh, is managed accordingly, uh, particularly in light of the fact that, uh, we're contemplating uh, cutting down mature trees. So that's, uh, the first point. The second point, uh, is only two out of the four walls will be maintained. Uh, we have concerns, uh, about, um, this, uh, moving of soil and how it can potentially promote our foundation. We have spoken, uh, to our neighbors and they assured us of sure. Uh, we, we would also like to look at, um, you know, looking at insurance, um, to ensure that everything is.
Sorry, John, not, not to interrupt, and I will stop your, your time, but if you can just speak clear into the microphone, it's coming in a little muffled on our end.
Okay, uh, can you hear me better now?
Yeah. Yep, that's, that's better. So whenever, whenever you're ready, I'll, I'll restart the timer or I'll continue the timer.
Okay, um, so I guess, um, really when it comes down to it, um, in order to increase the square footage, which we believe is five hundred and twenty-seven, um, what we propose is that we're gonna lose, uh, trees that add to the character of the neighborhood. And so really, when it comes down to it, um, you know, it's a, it's an attached garage that they want. And in our minds, um, is, you know, how is the neighborhood gonna be impacted or the street particularly, uh, for an extra five hundred and twenty-seven square feet? Um, but we all are gonna lose a beautiful tree that lines on Tree Line Street. Uh, when it comes to the variances, uh, that are being allowed, um, that's why we're seeing, um, the square footage be, you know, obviously aligned with that. And I think the other thing that we wanna bring up are one of the consequences of the wildlife. Uh, the street is, you know, uh, got, like, birds in particular. Um, and so again, we're looking at this from a group, uh, perspective and the street in particular. Uh, you know, how is everyone being affected? And if we actually look at the street in general, all the properties, um, have a detached garage uh, and ample space between the homes. So the proposed, um, I guess, changes would also change, uh, what we typically see in our neighborhood. And again, uh, it's why we bought a house in this neighborhood. We wanna maintain the character of the neighborhood, its charm, uh, and that's why we're objective.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Majorius.
Thank you.
A panel, any questions or comments for Dr. Majorius? Okay, um. Mister Romano, your opportunity to rebut.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman, and I too, uh, thank Dr. Majorius for, for your comments. So in terms of side yard setbacks, uh, the, uh, Dr. Majorius's property has a building on it that is next to our subject, uh, lot, which has a, uh, just about a seventy-four to seventy-six centimeter side yard setback. What is being proposed in terms of side yard setback variance is not on that side, but it's on the other side next to, uh, number thirty-four. And the proposed side yard setback is in keeping with what we see both on the property map as well as the air photograph. And those are for buildings that have either both integral or non-integral garages. It is, uh, common in this area. It's an area in transition. Clearly, they were new construction for the most part. Does indeed have an integral garage as part of a footprint of the house and the garage counts towards floor space index. The force, the floor space index that's being proposed, the additional forty-eight point nine square meters. I do have a table number, um, page three of the slide. I'm not asking staff to bring that up. I'm just suggesting that what is found in this area is quite common for floor space indices in excess of even zero point five-six that's being proposed to be found. The forty-eight point nine square meters is not an unusual request and it does not result in an expansion of the building footprint. If we look again at the site plan, we'll see that the building footprint is, I mean, a fourteen point seven eight meters over, over two stories. It's quite a, quite a compact and it's a sculpted footprint. The, uh, trees that are being affected, the two trees are both within as of right. And as I said, as of right permission, urban forestry really has, has no choice but to grant a permit. So I don't understand their, their, their memorandum, although I do see in their memorandum that they're saying that even the north side yard setback and the north eaves projection should be denied because it'll result in tree removal. That is clearly not the case, because that north side yard setback and the eaves has, has no bearing whatsoever on that front tree that's next to the driveway and the rear tree that's within the nineteen-meter building depth permission. The other tree that's shown here to be removed has a forty-degree, uh, lean towards the north, so leans onto the neighboring properties. It's a white birch. It's nineteen centimeters, just shown there because we, we wanna be fully transparent. Terms of grading, uh, there's, there's nominal grading change here. Clearly, any new construction on a building or building addition here is going to result in grading changes at the front. That retaining wall for that tree is not practically to be, be maintained, but it will all be, uh, on property and there's new soft landscaping that's being added. So that driveway condition that goes basically between the side. So that driveway condition that goes basically between the side wall of the existing structure on the site and Dr. Majorius's building will be replaced with landscaping. So that will help with grading and certainly in terms of shoring and grading, the building permit process will be followed. And as I mentioned, in terms of soft landscaping, the front and the rear are larger than what the zoning bylaw would require. And we do have a planting plan that we had submitted that shows that there's abundant space for new tree plantings to be planted in appropriate locations that which would not interfere with existing buildings or structures. So I would submit that, once again, that the variances are minor and there's no unacceptable adverse impact on Dr. Majorius's property and landholding or on the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Panel, any comments or questions for Mr. Romano?
I have one question, Mr.?
Yes, Ms. Popper.
Mr. Agent, clarify, if you would please, your comment about the tree planting plan. Is that a plan? Is that a commitment? And can you address whether or not that would compensate for the loss of the trees that you've described that your client wants to have removed?
Yes, thank you for that question through you, Mr. Chairman. The tree planting plan is part of the arborist report. It is part of what's going to be submitted to urban forestry. So it is a commitment and it's going to be a requirement. Once trees are removed, they will require the planting of multiple trees on the subject site and they will compensate, more than compensate for what is occurring with the tree removals. Bearing in mind that clearly, new trees are not old mature trees, but they will grow to old mature trees given the abundant green space that is available open to front and in the rear yard. And once again, in this case, the proposal involves no city tree, none of the city trees are being affected and there is one out front and adjacent to the subject site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romano. Any other comments, questions?
If no one has any, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
After hearing Mr. Romano's presentation and his very thorough rebuttal, I am going to move for approval. I believe this application meets the four tests under the Planning Act. It is certainly desirable and move for approval subject to urban forestry condition number one and community planning condition.
I think it's number two.
Yes, I believe it's urban forestry condition two. I just checked that with their memo.
It is two?
It's a privately owned tree, yeah.
Okay, urban forestry condition two.
And the community planning.
And the community, yep.
Is there a second or for Ms. Alderson's motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kumarak. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Romano. Moving on to application number fourteen twenty-two, Bow Court Road. The purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. We have two planning conditions. The planning department reminded us that the FSI in condition one, oh, and this is a revised application, by the way. It's eight variances, one through seven and nine. Planning reminded us or advised us, the FSI that appears to be rather extreme is due to the fact that the FSI is based on the top of bank land area of this lot. And if the entire lot was included in the calculation, the FSI would be zero point five two. We have transportation conditions. We have ravine and natural features is okay. An application to them is required for the information of the applicant. TRCA is okay. Forestry, urban forestry has requested condition one regarding city-owned tree. And we have opposition from both immediate neighbors and a petition. And we have two registered speakers on this application. Mr. Benkowski? Are you online, sir?
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, could you give us a brief presentation on your proposal here?
Yeah, absolutely. So as you did mention, Mr. Chair, variance number one has changed. Variance number two has changed. Variance number eight was eliminated. Just in terms of variance number nine, that deals with shoreline hazard, we have submitted on the AIC TRCA. So in terms of the variance for number nine, I would say that's technical at this point, seeing as TRCA has already issued a permit permitting the dwelling where it is proposed. In terms of the dwelling itself, if we could go to one of the side elevation, please. And I think the main objections really come from the proposed front yard setback and the proposed side yard setbacks. As you mentioned, Mr. Chair, the FSI is calculated on essentially what's considered the developable area, which is the exact rear wall of the dwelling. This dwelling is sited to the rear at the only portion that would permit any type of development itself. Planning was a little off in their calculation because we did reduce the FSI as per the alterations of moving the dwelling back. The actual FSI would be point five, not point five two, just a quick note. Yeah, so if we see here, this property is built on an extreme slope. And due to that, really zoning bylaw really is not made for every property on an individual case-by-case basis. Because of the limit of the rear of the property, a dwelling that would comply with the front yard setback would only be nine meters deep or essentially twenty-nine feet six in depth. In terms of today's standards, that would be very tough to even accommodate a three-bedroom house, let alone the standard of a four-bedroom dwelling in the city today. Along this portion of Bow Court, as we start to move to the north, the city, the street does start to turn. So in terms of it being a flat facade of what we see as we move up and down the street, that is not the case because this portion of Bow Court does start to bend, which then does start to tier the front yard setbacks as we go to the north along the street. In terms of the side yard setback, if we could go to the survey, please. The proposed side yard setbacks on both sides are point six meters. The aggregate today of the existing house that sits on the property is one point four one meters. So if I take the combined side yards that exist today, we get one point four one meters. Our combined aggregate is one point two meters. So we're essentially looking at a difference of point two one meters of massing as it would face the street. I would say, in my opinion, that that would really be an indiscernible difference from somebody that's walking along Bow Court today to what would be proposed. I would also note that the side yard setback of both this dwelling and the adjacent dwelling to the south both have a side yard setback of point four six meters. What that tells us is largely developments within this neighborhood would have that same point four six meter side yard setback that exists there today. So this would be, again, a condition that we are not introducing anything new to what doesn't already exist on the land today. And I think in summary, again, to speak to the front yard setback, this really is the only way this property could be developed. We've worked with planning, as you can see with the conditions. We went back and forth with them. Planning is now okay with what we've done in terms of increasing that front yard setbacks, again, which also reduced the FSI. I'd be happy to answer any questions and listen to the concerns of the neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Benkowski. Panel, questions or comments for Mr. Benkowski? Okay, we can move to our speakers. We have Tara Ritchie in the room today, finally.
She's been in the room all day. It's just finally time to talk, right?
Well, we'll try and make you feel comfortable.
Thank you.
Yeah, just start with your name and address.
Tara Ritchie, twenty-three Bow Court Road, so across the street and slightly south. My concern is mostly, aside from a ton of red flags, mostly the where the house would be relative to the street. So whatever the proper verbiage is for that. It is a lovely cul-de-sac. The houses line up equally on both sides down the road. So the gentleman on the phone said that the house, the street itself starts to move a little bit to accommodate the cul-de-sac portion. He's actually three houses north of where that actually begins. So in terms of the line of the house, the house itself would be sitting out and essentially cutting off the back portion of that neighborhood, of my neighborhood. The other concern I have is with regards to the trees. It's a beautifully tree-lined street, a lot of mature trees. They have a tree sitting on that property, which is wonderful and it has been a grazing spot for the deer that also visit our neighborhood that come up from the ravine. So as a family with children, thinking this is a wonderful street, a wonderful neighborhood, I would hate to see that sacrificed. We've also unfortunately seen a few of the mature trees have had to be taken down and that's probably related to some of, I live in one of the houses that, I guess, nine years ago was torn down and redone. And our tree itself has suffered as a result of that. So I know that the tree relative to where they would like to put the house, the neighbor's tree to cross the street directly from me, their tree would be sacrificed. The gentleman on my north side would, has a very mature tree that's starting to show some of its age. It would also be sacrificed. So my concern is more around the livability of the street, the trees and that sort of thing. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Just before you go, are there any questions or comments for Ms. Ritchie?
Yeah, I had a question. You said something about it would cut off the back portion of the neighborhood. I don't, I can't understand what you mean.
So as you drive down our street, it's again a cul-de-sac. If you drive down the street, the house they're proposing is on the right side of the street. I live across and slightly down and I am still also above where the cul-de-sac portion is, begins. So a cul-de-sac essentially is around about. And the house that they are talking about is three houses north of where the cul-de-sac actually begins. So essentially, it would be blocking three houses prior to even where the cul-de-sac portion proceeds. So it would literally jut out the line of houses quite significantly based on my understanding of the numbers that they've put forward, that it would sit out blocking the houses that are south of it. So it's not sitting right on where the cul-de-sac turns, where there would be a tendency to be a natural, okay, you know, that's not so bad. It would actually be blocking homes on its south side.
Thank you.
So essentially, your main concern is how far the house sits in relation to the street?
Correct. Because they're also proposing putting, like, it looks to me, and again, I'm not, I'm new to this type of language, but it looks to me that there would be a deck on it, which would be logical. That also too is going to go under the street.
You've looked at the revised drawings versus the?
I have not seen the drawings, so, yeah.
Okay.
I've seen this.
Okay, because, yeah, he, the planning is suggesting that they move it back slightly, so.
Okay, which is lovely, but where is that relative to their tree? Because there is a tree on the property. So where does that fall relative to their tree? How would they protect the tree? How would they protect the tree that sits on the neighbor's lot to the south, which is literally smack dab in the middle of their lawn, which is, I don't know in meters, but.
Well, there's going to be a tree.
Closer than I am to her.
There has to be a tree protection plan that'll be part of the building.
For both the house, the one on the property as well as the property beside.
Any of the trees that may be affected.
Yeah, that's quite a few. My concern.
We can see that.
My concern is that, and I know this from my own property, the tree on my property has aged significantly since our house was put in. You put a driveway or a house, you're disturbing roots. It affects the ecosystem of the trees. So not only are we seeing that fallout with the trees that we've had to have removed, we're seeing it the fallout with the tree on my street, on my side of the street, as well, I would expect that there will be fallout for the trees that are on the side of the street that they're proposing building on. So I welcome the people to the neighborhood. My concern is relative to the trees and the ecosystem that we have going on the street as well as that long line with a big house jutting out onto the street.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. Okay, we have an online registered speaker.
Sorry.
David Kassen.
Through you, Mr. Chair, David Kassen. We did reach out to David via email and telephone, but he doesn't seem to be on the line.
Okay, then I guess we'll just, we'll proceed then. Mr. Benkowski, could you come and speak to Ms. Ritchie's comments?
Yes, I'd first like to just deal with the trees, Mr. Chair. We did submit an arborist report in support of the application. I don't know if you wanted to bring it up, but page five of the arborist report gives the tree inventory. There's not one tree proposed to be removed or in fact injured with the application. They're all proposed to be protected. So if we look on the far right, the far right column will give us essentially what we're doing to protect those trees. Those are all to be protected with not one of them proposed to even be injured with the application. So in terms of the trees as well as the, and I would also speak to, the three trees in question are all city boulevard trees that front this house, the dwelling to the north as well as the dwelling to the south. So they are all boulevard city trees. And again, not one of them is proposed to even be injured. If we could bring up the survey, just to speak to the facade and the sighting of the house in relation to the others, yeah, if we could just zoom in onto the front yard setbacks. We can already see from the survey here where the street starts to turn and where that leads to the sighting of the dwellings. We can see, for example, four seventy-six, which is the dwelling at the south, has a six point one two meter front yard setback with a recess garage up at twenty-four being seven nine four into six two five, all the way up to seven meters at number twenty at the top having a front yard setback. So we can already see there essentially a one-meter difference in the existing front yard setbacks of the dwellings that exist on Bow Court today. So again, it is not a flat facade as we can see from the survey here itself. And I really think that answers the two questions, the adjacent. I didn't really understand one of the things she was speaking about, protecting the trees across the street. I maybe was a little confused with that. But in terms of those three boulevard trees, they are all proposed to be protected and not even injured.
Thank you, Mr. Benkowski. Panel, any questions or?
Yeah, I'd like to ask the applicant or our staff to present the site plan versus the survey so we can see what's actually being proposed versus what's there now. And I want to focus on the front yard setback and just want to point out that, yes, the homes are not in a straight line, but the applicant's property protrudes further than either of the two abutting. We are still dealing with the front yard variance there that I think needs some discussion. So I don't know, Mr. Benkowski, if you want to, you know, comment on that or not, but I just want people to understand that what you're proposing still comes out beyond number twenty-four.
Correct, correct, through you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely, Mr. Kumarak. We can't hide that through really anything. But largely, the constraints of this property have led to this. We would love to push the house back. The house really cannot be sited anywhere else and really be functional. In terms, again, that intent and purpose of the front yard setback, really, again, yes, is to create a consistent street wall on how it presents itself. But what I would say is, again, as I reviewed from that survey, we don't have a consistent street wall there is today. From four houses being the south to the north that are on the survey, we do have a one-meter difference in those front yard setbacks that exist today, taking out the existing house on the property today. So again, I don't believe this would cause any type of, you know, adverse impact to either adjacent neighbor. If we see here, the rear wall of the dwelling is essentially lined up with twenty-four, which again would share that similar shoreline hazard at the rear with the subject property.
No, that's fair. I just wanted to point out that, you know, we should be looking at what's being proposed, not what's already there now. So, thank you.
Anything else, panel? Are we have questions or comments?
Am I missing something? There is no, I don't see any forestry.
Yes, it came in the additional information, forestry condition one.
Flip to that. Ah, okay, thank you. Ah, okay, thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion. And this would be based on the revised application, and we have planning conditions, transportation conditions, and forestry condition, should the motion be to approve.
So I'm assuming the neighbor, I think, has left, but she probably did not have a chance to look at the forestry report and the conditional condition.
Quite likely not.
I'll kick off some comments if no one's ready for a motion yet. I don't have personally any issues with forestry. I believe the applicant's addressed the forestry issues quite well. I think the transportation conditions and the planning conditions make sense. I do somewhat sympathize with the objection of number 24 with regards to the front yard setback. I understand the challenge, and I guess it's a question of, you know, is this site appropriate for that large of a house? That's what it comes down to, really. And if you think it is, then I think it's a reasonable request. If you think it's an overbuild, then it's not. And that's... it really comes down to a judgment call on this one. What's the square footage on it?
Almost.
Almost.
Yeah, so what's being proposed is a home of just under 3,000 square feet, which I don't think is excessive, and, you know, I understand the constraints of the construction at the rear. It's one of these balancing acts of balancing people's rights, and I'm going to go with our... what planning has deemed on this one, saying that they feel it is appropriate so long as the two conditions of approval are put in place. And so therefore, I'd like to move approval, subject to the two planning conditions, subject to the three transportation conditions, subject to forestry condition one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Comorek. Is there a second there for that motion?
Mr. Chair, I share some of the concerns of my colleague. However, on balance, I am prepared to second the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? That is unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Ben Skoski. Moving on to item 15, 88 Eden Bridge Drive. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are six variances. We have on file our urban forestry recommendation to refuse with a fallback to impose conditions two and three. There's been a ravine and natural features protection, an okay with a notification and an application. Oh, no, an application has been filed already, and an application has also been filed to urban forestry for condition two. We have a planning condition, we have three transportation commission conditions. We have opposition from the immediate neighbor at 88A, and we have TRCA requesting either deferral or refusal. Mr. Gornik, the agent, are you available, sir?
I am. Anthony Gornik here for 88 Eden Bridge Drive.
Yeah, if you could just make a brief presentation and, you know, maybe focus on the opposition and the TRCA issue.
Okay, so we are requesting six minor variances today for this submission. We, as far as the urban forestry, I have met with the urban forester on site and appreciate their memo. The... we are proposing to remove or impact eight trees. Of the eight trees, only one is not in the as-of-right, so the front... the trees in the front yard are all in the as-of-right building envelope, and I find that their memo to be a bit misleading as the... as you can see in this presentation you're on the screen right now, the only one tree is outside that as-of-right sort of submission, so we find that to be a little bit misleading. As far as the TRCA's recommendation, we have submitted a formal application to the TRCA and did this on October the 6th of last year. We were assigned a planner for this file, and upon the first nine weeks of our submission, we reached out to that planner many times with little to no reply or engagement from them. So the first week in December, I reached out to the associate director, Stephen Hykert, and requested a new planner assigned to this file. We do have Nicole Moxley now assigned to this file, and we are working through their requirements. We are very familiar with ravine properties and all the permits and clearances that are required to obtain a building permit. So the zero-meter setback that we are requesting, specific to the TRCA memo, the existing house that currently is on the site currently has a zero-meter setback, and we are using that as a datum in positioning our new proposal. So the actual impacts on the ravine are no different than what's there today. In our submission, we proposed to maintain the existing swimming pool and the rear landscaping, so we feel that the zero-meter setback that's before us today to be minor and basically the exact same condition that's currently on site. The other variances with regards to GFA and FSI, side yard setbacks and whatnot, we feel that these are all appropriate. We have had discussions with the planning department, and their memo sort of supports that as well. So that is my brief submission today.
So, sir, are you saying that... what are you saying about the request? This is what TRCA requested, a geotechnical investigation and slope stability assessment, and they're saying that that remains outstanding, and that's the reason for requesting deferral?
Yes, we have engaged with a geotechnical firm that we've used in the past, and we are... we will be submitting this in the next week or two. I have met with TRCA staff on site earlier this week, and we are working through the regular course, and fully appreciate that for us to obtain a building permit, we will need a TRC approval. So as far as the variance that is before us today, it's really a zero-meter setback off the long-term stable top of bank, and our submission, the proposed rear wall in our application is exactly the same as the current location of the existing home on site. We find this variance to be minor, and will work through, you know, obtaining our TRCA permits, subject to today's outcome.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a question with regards to the conditions outlined by transportation. I'm assuming you have no issues with those conditions?
No, we don't. We're more than fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
But I have a question for the deputy secretary of treasure. Barb, if this committee approved this application today, is there the potential for TRCA, depending on their subsequent review of their required geotechnical investigation and slope stability assessment, that our approval would be moot anyway?
I believe, and maybe the applicant can clarify, TRCA is part of the applicable law that they would need in order to obtain a zoning certificate, so regardless of a committee of adjustment application, I believe they would be subject to TRCA policies and permits.
Okay, I think that's important to know, Ms. Popovich.
Mr. Chair, on to that point, along those lines, I was thinking as well, since it's a... it's an unknown future event, and it has the potential of perhaps rebounding, I'm leaning towards the deferral so that we have the full information available, and TRC has an opportunity to review the yet-to-be-created report, geo-technical report.
Yeah, we don't typically defer after we've heard all the evidence, but...
Can I just... Is urban forestry not asking for refusal of this application?
No, they're not. Well, yes, but they've given us a fallback to impose conditions two and three.
Two and three, yes. Well, there's always a fallback. Yeah, and I just have a quick question. How many square feet is this house?
About 10,000.
A lot.
About 10,000 square feet?
It's also a huge lot.
I know. Oh, I know.
Yeah, no, it's a big one.
I just want to make a comment with regards to TRCA. I assume that we should just treat that as a separate process irrespective of what we decide, and they can turn this down just as easily as we can. We typically do not tie conditions to TRCA or Metrolinks.
Right.
And so I would just... my inclination would be to just treat those as advisory comments.
Recognizing that it's... well, it's really a bit more than advice, isn't it? It has the potential to nullify whatever we decide to do.
Reverse this.
If it was to an approval.
But that's the advice that we...
Yeah, it's a caution.
Precisely the advice that the applicant needs to wear.
We need to see this stuff, and you're not going to get your required permit until we see it and agree with it, right?
Same as forestry can still do that, too.
Could we approve it subject to TRCA approval?
We don't really have to, because they have... no, we wouldn't... we don't impose TRCA conditions. That's a separate regulatory regime. It's just we know that it's there, and the applicant has been cautioned about these outstanding requirements. So I guess... I guess we're between, you know, approving it with the understanding of the power of TRCA. It could nullify an approval if we made it, or, as Ms. Popovich suggests, we're dealing with an unknown until we do. Maybe a deferral is the way to go, all underlined by the reality that we normally don't defer after we've heard the evidence.
Yeah, I have one more question for the applicant, if we can, before going forward. Are we in committee now, or we still...
Yeah, yeah. We're retroactively in committee.
Okay, I'll take that back then. I just wanted to make sure that there's been a proper process with number 88A, because I see their letter primarily as concern rather than objection.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So if we're in committee, I would like to propose a motion, and I believe that this substantially does meet the four tests, and would like to propose approval, subject to two planning conditions, subject to three transportation conditions, subject to forestry conditions one, two, and three.
I think it's just two and three.
No, I think the refusal was saying if you don't refuse, the alternative was one and... oh, okay.
I think further to our briefing.
Right, right.
Just say forestry.
Okay, let's just say subject to forestry conditions, and I just note TRCA as an advisory comment.
Okay, is there a second there for Mr. Comorek's motion? That motion fails. I now invite another motion.
In view of the fact that TRCA is asking for deferral, and in view of the fact that they can, in fact, completely reverse any decision we make here today, I am going to move, even though we've heard the application, and we don't typically do this, but I am going to move for deferral.
Okay, is there a second there for a motion to defer?
I will second that motion.
Mr. Ross, all in favor?
What is... can I just get the reasons so that we have that in the minutes? Is it to resolve issues with TRCA?
The reason is that TRCA is asking for deferral, and I would add that urban forestry condition number five has some impact on that decision.
So we have a motion, we have it seconded, all in favor? That carries four to one with Mr. Comorek in dissent. Okay, we have two more applications in this morning's session. First up is number 26, 26 Smith Crescent. Purpose is to construct a new detached garage that will contain a secondary... second-story garden suite in the rear yard. There are nine variances. We have... pretty straightforward, we have no recorded speakers, we have okays from planning, transportation, and a support petition from the people in the neighborhood. Ms. Evangelista, Asian, are you online?
The owners of 26... Yes, hi, can you hear...
Yeah, we... yeah, can you hear us? Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
I certainly can. Yeah, this is a pretty straightforward application, no concerns, no comments, no objections. I would suggest that we don't need a full presentation. If you want to make a couple of comments to us, fine, or perhaps we could just move to questions from the panel.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we work very closely with planning, and as you can see, they are now in support of the application. Transportation is also in support, and most importantly, the neighbors are in support. I am open to any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Panel, questions, comments? Let's go into committee then.
I would just comment that the neighbors involved are on both sides, so they're immediate neighbors.
So can we have a motion to consider?
I'd be prepared to move a motion to approve the revised application. I believe five of the variances have been reduced from the original. I believe that it is now in keeping with the four tests, and would make that no conditions.
We're seconded for Mr. Comorek's motion.
I'll be happy to second.
Ms. Alderson, thank you. All in favor? That is unanimously approved. Thank you, Ms. Evangelista. Moving on to the final item of this morning's agenda, number 17, 92 Lake Shore Drive. Purpose is to construct a second-story rear addition, a partial third-story addition that will include a front platform and a deck in the rear yard. This is a revised application, I think I said that. There's been an amendment to variance number four. There are five variances in total, and there is absolutely nothing on file from neighbors or agencies. So again, I would suggest... Mr. Perez, are you with us?
Hi, good morning, Chairman and committee members.
Yeah, Eddie, I... Yeah, Eddie, I...
Eddie Perez, I'm, I'm at 5:37.
Sir, if I can just speak for a second? I don't believe we need a full presentation. This is very simple, straightforward. Nobody's commented on it. Would you, you be okay to make a brief comment if you feel necessary for our consideration, or move right into questions from the panel, if any?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I have is just to mention, like you said, the variance for .47 meters is being eliminated because the, as per planning, they, we moved the railing over, so now we, we don't have a variance for that portion of it.
Yep.
That's it. Everything else is pretty straightforward, and it meets the four tests.
Okay, so thanks. We'll just move into any questions that the panel may have. Anyone? Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I believe that this matter is relatively straightforward. I see no comments or concerns from staff, and I believe it meets the four tests. I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. Is there a second there for Ms. Popovich's motion?
Can I just add a friendly motion, approve the revised plans?
Thank you, yes.
Friendly amendment, thank you.
Yeah.
And there are no conditions?
No, sorry. And I'll, sorry, and I'll second that motion, yes.
Good. All in favor? Unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Perez. So we will now adjourn to, I guess we can stick with 1:00 PM.
Yes, we can.
That's a first. That's a first.
That's a good...
Do I win anything for that? Okay, thanks, everybody. We'll see you at 1:00.
Don't forget to turn off your cameras.